I'd like to call this December 6, 2007 meeting of the Crystal City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Kathy. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No change.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to all those in favor of the motion. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item two, we have a consent agenda, items two, three, four, and five. Item two has set a date for a public hearing on ordinance 071236, rezoning the 433 Profit Street from RS5 Single Family to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Item three is setting a date, January 3, 2008, 6:00 PM for a public hearing on ordinance 071237, closure and abandonment of a portion of an undeveloped right-of-way of Park Street. Item four is consider awarding bids for Transformers feed-through cabinets and wood poles with the electric department. And item five would be considering awarding bid for one total station surveying equipment. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to the old business portion of our meeting. Item six, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on November 15, 2007. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to the old business portion of our meeting. Item six, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on November 15, 2007. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Now to our new business portion of the meeting. Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071133 rezoning properties along Whitson Avenue between East Hudson Street and East Stevens Street from RS5 Single Family Residential to RS10 Single Family Residential. Sponsored by James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the property that's being considered for rezoning is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view of the site. The area along Whitson Avenue that's proposed for rezoning is generally bounded by South Maple Avenue to the east, unnamed alley to the west, East Stevens Street to the south, and East Hudson Streets to the north. It consists of 25 parcels comprising approximately 12.8 acres. It's contiguous with RS5 zoning to the west and north, with RS5 zoning, RS15 zoning to the east, and with RS15 zoning to the south. The rezoning proposal was initiated at the request of Mr. Thomas Hadlock. Mr. Hadlock's rezoning request included a petition signed by the owners of 14 additional parcels favoring rezoning and included a larger area consisting of 34 parcels and approximately 17 acres. The red boundary depicts the area that was originally requested for rezoning. He indicated in the petition that the purpose of the request was to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. The RS5 and the RS10 zoning districts have the same permitted uses and are both intended primarily for single-family residential development. The difference between the two districts are in the minimum lot size requirement and setbacks. The RS5, of course, allows a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet with front setbacks of 20, rear 15, and sides of 7.5. The proposed RS10 zoning requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, front setbacks of 25, rear of 20, and side setbacks of 10. As noted, the original request was for a larger area, however, it was determined that support existed only by property owners along Whitson Avenue. Of the 25 parcels along Whitson Avenue, support for the rezoning was indicated by the owners of 17, and only one property owner along Whitson Avenue indicated that they were opposed to the rezoning. And this is the area that's being considered for rezoning, and the proposed rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission and is recommended by the Planning Department.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second. Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
James, I had a question as the Planning Commission's representative. We just had at the last Planning Commission meeting a gentleman who asked to subdivide a piece of property under its current zoning. When that, it was approved at Planning Commission, when that comes back, it was approved before the first reading of this. That's okay, right?
It's already been approved and recorded.
Okay.
So it's an existing two-lot subdivision that was approved under the previous zoning.
Okay.
And he was the resident that was opposed to the rezoning because he intended, I think, he explained to the Planning Commission that he wanted to build a second home for his son, and that's been done, so I don't know that, there's probably no opposition now, or we've not been indicated there's any opposition.
So will all those structures be conforming?
No. No, there'll be several non-conforming structures, there'll be a few non-conforming lots that will be in there, but they'd be grandfathered in. Some of the lots would be less than 10,000 square feet, which is required under RS10. There's, I think we looked, and there were six that would not meet setback requirements under the new RS10 zone, but they'd also be grandfathered in.
So does it make sense to rezone something that's already, you know, is non-conforming?
Well, there was a lot of debate about this at Planning Commission, and they felt like with the vast majority of the residents wanting that and with little opposition, if the residents wanted that, and it was, my opinion, the basic reason for this was to keep people from resubdiving and creating smaller lots and increasing the density on this area, and I think that's one of the things Mr. Hadlock mentioned was concerns about these lots being divided and a lot more traffic being presented in there, which they could have, several lots could have been divided under the, or can be divided under the RS5 zone.
I think, for example, the corner of East Stevens and Maple, under the current zone, that could be approximately six lots right there, and there are several other lots that could be subdivided from one single-family residential unit to two.
A lot of these on Maple could be, not to interrupt, but a lot of these could just, could have, under RS5, basically be split down the middle into houses put on them, and I think, not that that was a desire of the property owners, but it was possible, and I think that was a concern, and that's why this request was initiated by the property owner.
Well, and it would have also, under the Whitson Avenue, if you could see everything to the west of Whitson, there would have been the ability to do flag lots there on those because they were so deep. Is that not correct?
Which that was what was done with that one lot.
What are the little, the little notches there in the middle?
Well, they're, they're separate tracks, separate parts, and they'll show it better on the screen. They're separate parcels.
Oh, okay.
That's a track, and that's a track.
Right.
And have, these both have homes on them also. Did I have an area on this?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No.
But if 17 out of 25, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted this, that sounds pretty favorable, but they, that they want to keep their neighborhood intact, I suppose, and not have a lot of change.
And as I noted, we only had one person in this area on Whitson that was opposed, and he was the gentleman that wanted to subdivide, and there may be other people here tonight, but at the Planning Commission meeting, there was, that was the only opposition that was presented. And I think that's why the Planning Commission recommended it, since the overwhelming majority were in favor, that was why it was recommended.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Anybody that would like to speak on this? Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Brings us to item eight, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071134 comprehensive rezoning along North Washington Avenue and 10th Street from CL Local Commercial to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Sponsored by Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of the properties that are being considered for rezoning are depicted on the screen. This area consists of 38 parcels in their entirety and the portions of four other parcels in their front on East 10th Street and North Washington Avenue. This proposed rezoning was initiated by the Planning Commission following the completion of a study by the Planning Department on the current zoning of certain properties along East 10th Street and North Washington Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the property that's been considered under this ordinance. This is the study area that was reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department. The purpose of the study was to evaluate the appropriateness of the current CL Local Commercial zoning of the area and to examine the feasibility of CN. While the CL and CN zoning districts both allow commercial land uses, there are significant differences between the two. The CN district is the most restrictive commercial district within the city. Structures within the CN district are required to be compatible in terms of scale and appearance with nearby residential structures. There is no such requirement in the CL district. The maximum square footage of any development within the CN district is 15,000 square feet, and in the CL it's 50,000 square feet. The CN district requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and there is no minimum lot size requirement in the CL. The maximum lot coverage in the CN is 50% and the CL is 60%. And also, the CN has a side yard setback requirement of 10 feet while there is no side yard setback requirement in the CL. There are also very significant differences in the types of land uses permitted in the two zoning districts. The CN district is intended to blend with and minimally impact nearby residential properties. Single-family and duplex residential developments are allowed in the CN district but are prohibited in the CL district. Multi-family residential is allowed in the CL, but on the other hand, is prohibited in the CN district. The CL district also allows numerous private service and commercial uses that are not allowed in the CN district. These include hotels and motels, auto and truck repair, new and used auto sales, check advanced and title loans, funeral homes, kennels, and veterinary clinics, nightclubs and taverns, pawn shops, small engine repair, tattoo parlors, convenience stores, gasoline sales, drive-thru restaurants, the sale of storage buildings, and cabinet shops. The area studied by the Planning Commission, which is depicted on the screen, consisted of 78 parcels comprising an area of almost 100 acres. The portion along East 10th Street is bordered to the north and south by established single-family residential developments, and the portion along North Washington Avenue is bordered by single-family residence development to the east and by Prescott Central Middle School to the west. The study area was identified because of several factors which would appear to make it appropriate for CN zoning. First, the area has many of the characteristics appropriate for CN zoning, including lot and structure size and the nature of existing and surrounding land uses. Few lots within the study area, with the exception of the parcels located at the southeast and northwest of the intersection of East 10th Street and North Washington Avenue, are large enough for developments of 50,000 square feet, which is permitted in the CL district. There are only six developments in the entire study area that exceed the maximum 15,000 square footage requirement. These include, the largest, of course, is the Northside Center, which is approximately 49,000 square feet, the Village Center at approximately 27,000 square feet, the First Cumbler and Presbyterian Church at 26,000, and the Old Skating Rank at 18,000. Much of the study area has developed as a transition from primarily single-family residential to commercial uses. Several of the current commercial uses are located in structures that were previously used for single-family residents, and there are 13 occupied single-family residents remaining in the area. A land use inventory, which is depicted on the screen, indicates that only 24 of the 78 parcels, or 31%, are used for purposes that would be non-conforming if the area was rezoned to CN. Any use made non-conforming by rezoning action is, of course, grandfathered in and protected by TCA Section 137208. Such uses can remain in perpetuity, can be expanded as long as they don't acquire additional property, and they have 30 months to be reestablished if they are discontinued. The largest concentration of uses that would be non-conforming in the CN district are located just west of Brown Avenue to the west of Fisk Road. A second concentration of potentially non-conforming uses is located to the north of the intersection at North Washington Avenue and East 10th Street. Perhaps the most important reason for considering the feasibility of CN zoning for all or portions of the study area would be the benefits to the general welfare of the immediate area and the municipality as a whole. The ability to have some control over the appearance of structures on one of the main routes into the heart of the city would enhance property values and minimize the impact on nearby residential developments. Limiting the size of structures would also minimize the impact of commercial developments on the adjacent residential areas. And removing the impact that a potential large-scale commercial development could have on an already strained major thoroughfare would help to slow traffic increase, improve public safety, and lessen the need for infrastructure improvements. The future land use plan indicates that the study area is best suited for commercial and private service uses of a neighborhood scale, which is defined in the plan as a market area of one to two miles. The CL and CN are both appropriate zones for this land use category. Also, several goals and objectives identified in the plan could be addressed through the implementation of CN zoning within all or part of the study area. The primary goal of the plan is to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life in Cookville while encouraging a more harmonious and higher standard development. Based on the completed analysis, it was determined by the Planning Commission that two sections along the western and eastern ends of the study area would be more appropriately zoned as CN. It was also concluded that a middle section of the study area should remain zoned as CL. This area, this middle area, consists of 29 parcels comprising approximately 40 acres and basically is along 10th Street between Mitchell and just west of Fisk Road. The primary reason for excluding this section was the number and nature of uses that would be non-conforming if rezoned to CN. Many of the land uses, land uses within this area would be, become, would, that would become non-conforming under CN are relatively new and are of such a scale that it's unlikely that if we did rezone to CN that the purpose of CN would ever be achieved. Additionally, the Planning Commission felt that there are certain uses in this section that could be considered beneficial or desirable on a limited basis to the nearby residential areas, and for example, a gas station. They felt like there was a need for a limited number of gas stations. The western portion of this area, which is what's being considered under this ordinance, contains 42 parcels and consists of 49.3 acres, and it stretches basically from just west of Mitchell Avenue to all the way up to the railroad track on North Washington. There are nine uses in this area that would be non-conforming if rezoned to CN. Two developments exceed the maximum permitted square footage allowed in the CN, that's the Northside Shopping Center and the Presbyterian Church. This area also includes the greatest amount of undeveloped properties and the largest concentration of single-family residential structures. The proposed rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission and is recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion by the council?
Mr. Mills, in the rezoning of this, if there is a non-conforming use in a CN zone, what occurs to the non-conforming use?
It has the right to remain in perpetuity. If it is discontinued, they have 30 months to be recontinued. So you could go out of business for 30 months, and then you, if you don't, you have that length of time to restart as a grandfathered-in use. You also have the right to tear down and rebuild. You also have the right to expand as long as you can meet setback requirements.
And when you tear down and rebuild, do you have to conform to the CN architectural codes, or can you rebuild as it stands now?
Build as it stands.
So you don't have to, if you, if a building would burn down that was non-conforming, and the owner wanted to build it back just the way it is, they can do that without having to meet the restrictions that are covered in CN because they're grandfathered?
In my opinion, they could, yes, ma'am.
As I said in work session Monday, I certainly agree with the majority of this rezoning because my ultimate goal is to protect neighborhoods that are adjacent, that touch this, actually, this swath of land. My only problem with the entire thing is that we have a shopping center, the Northside Shopping Center, in that area that runs to the railroad track that's west of North Washington that does not touch any neighborhood, I mean, touch any, well, any houses. There is some rental property and some owners who have spoken to me that they do not want, their property changed to CN, but, so I do not see the reason why we should change the CL to CN on the Northside Shopping Center, that two or three acres. It does not touch any neighborhoods, and I just don't see the point, and it's been there 40 years, and so I just, that's my only, that's my only problem with this motion. One of the things that, in thinking about all this and looking at it all, I think about driving down Washington, going north, and not so much in the near future, maybe not in three to five, 10 years, but definitely as those areas are going to change, and they'll change hands eventually, what I would envision is that that whole corner would be neighborhood-friendly because of the sight as you drive down Washington Avenue and the look and feel of that, that you want to maintain the integrity of those houses that are south of that, and then those houses over to the east. And I keep looking at Cookville through the eyes of somebody who goes to different places and notices now that so many cities are trying to bring this CN in so that it is neighborhood-friendly. So that, and I feel like the businesses that are there right now are protected under the grandfather law. I also feel like they're protected under the 30-month situation. I don't know exactly what you call that, but that if something closes, that within 30 months, you can bring that same non-complying store back in. And I feel like that's a backup for the owners as we speak now. So that's definitely why I'm in favor of the CN totally. And also, quite frankly, I think about, we made that one corner CN, and those residents, I feel like, who are affected by that, would feel more comfortable with that becoming
I think we need to, at some point, sooner than later, check and decide what we want that the CN to read like. I think that's part of our problem or misunderstanding of this, is what's included and what isn't included. And we talked about this at work session, and perhaps there are uses that are forbidden or excluded from CN now that we can modify. You know, I think there are places, obviously, convenience stores and laundromats and all these kinds of things, and so to just randomly exclude, and even offices, that one makes no sense to me at all, why a home health office would not be allowed in the neighborhood commercial. That would appear to me would be something that you would want in that particular zoning. So I would like for us, at some point, maybe you could bring a recommendation to us when you have some free time.
I think it would be appropriate for the Planning Commission to do a study of the land uses and see if there are amendments that need to be made, and there may very well be.
Okay.
I'm in, I'm in agreement with Councilman Shelton. I think the, as we looked at this, as the Planning Commission looked at this, one of the things we were, that James hasn't mentioned, that the Planning Commission was interested in is this is a gateway or an entrance into our city, and the thought or the theory was that, yeah, today, these are non-conforming uses and that they're businesses that we really like having in Cookville, and so I think Councilman Shelton makes a good point in that maybe we ought to look at those, but the difficulty for the Planning Commission was to look at this intersection or this intersection itself as a whole. And I think to the north of the Northside Shopping Center, there are residences, it's our understanding that most of those are rental properties anyways. I'm, I'm kind of torn as it relates to this, one way or the other, mainly because I feel like that this area in itself should be CN. Mr. Walker's my neighbor, and he gets to drive by my house every day, so I can understand his point as it relates to his piece of property, but it's my understanding under 137208 and being grandfathered, that the only thing that he might inhibit him, the difference between CN and CL, and that's what I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, is the, is the number or uses that can go back into that place if we were to rezone this property. He can build back like it is, he can rent to who he currently has or to others. Is that correct, James?
I believe that's correct. I think the primary limitation to anybody that's non-conforming right now would be your, the CN is much more restrictive in terms of uses. And if it's not, you know, if there are uses in the CL that you had some desire to be in the future, that's the one thing that you'd be prohibited from doing, if it's not already existing now. And I went through the list that I gave you, went through them a minute ago, those were some of, I think what the Planning Commission felt were the most, the uses they felt like were the most unacceptable for the area. There are a lot of other uses, and Councilman Shelton's addressed a few of them, like the laundromat, that may be, you know, that needs to be changed, but if you're wanting, the big difference, though, to answer your question, Councilman Williams, is that the restriction would be, they won't be able to use it for other uses that they could currently use it for now.
Did we ever get an answer on the fact that the Northside Shopping Center in particular, Mr. Walker's business, his business is the rental of the Northside Shopping Center? So if, if a tenant changes hands within that, does that fall under this or not?
I believe it does. It has to do with land use, it's how the property's used, and it's currently used for the uses that are inside each of those individual compartments.
What would be, can we have, is there a legal opinion on that now?
Well, the answer to that question is, I think I agree with Mr. Mills, that as long as he has the same tenants or tenants using the property for the same purpose. The issue is if he has someone who wants to come in and put in a new business that's not there, hasn't been there after we changed the property. That's, that's the issue.
Okay.
But as far as, you know, barbecues, and then another restaurant, and another restaurant, I think that's fine.
What about a business that's not currently there but has been there at some point in the past?
Give me an example.
A laundromat.
For instance. A laundromat that has been there, that hadn't been there in 10 years?
The building is plumbed for it but has not been there in six or seven, eight, nine years.
I think that could potentially be problematic, and that'd be up to the judge to interpret the statute, but that is a potential risk, that if it's not being used now or within 30 months from now, it is a potential risk, you know, but statutes can be interpreted by different judges different ways, and I don't want to give anybody carte blanche, guarantee one way or the other. That could be an issue. But what he has now, or what anybody has now, they should be fine with what they have as we sit here today.
But if, James, correct me if I'm wrong, let's say Mr. Walker lost a tenant tomorrow, and we hope he doesn't, but if he does tomorrow and he wanted to rent to somebody that is a laundromat, there is a policy or a method by which he can add that laundromat back to that by coming through the BZA, is that not correct, or no?
No, that's a use variance. The only option would be what Councilman Shelton was alluding to earlier, is amending the zoning code to add that as a use permitted in there. The board can't amend the code to allow different uses that aren't specified in the code.
And I was simply using that example as just to try to get a feel for what we can and can't do. I'm not specifically talking that there needs to be a laundromat or shouldn't be a laundromat, I just was curious about the scope of what we're talking about here.
Well, also remember now, not just Mr. Walker's property, but there are the property north of that shopping center, that's a little space that certainly I wouldn't think anyone would want to put residents there, so there can be businesses there that might be of use, and so why should we want to restrict them when there's, I mean, to the point of CN, when there's just a railroad track and university zoning behind it? I mean, I don't know what we're, why we're trying to, because I'm not seeing across the street there are houses, and I certainly do agree that CN across the street on the east side of Washington, they certainly back up to houses, so, but there, I just, I just don't get the point of having, changing it at this, at this time, and then, and you've got, you're going to leave a CL up on east on, on 10th Street, you're leaving a block of businesses at CL, so why are we having to change to the CN on this one? I'm just not getting the point.
Well, I would, first of all, like to applaud the Planning Commission for even just being proactive about their approach to planning in our community. Having served on that commission for four years, and I think that, my opinion is that we have one of the, a fantastic group of people from all walks of life on that Planning Commission that brings some fantastic ideas to our city. And a lot of times, having sat on there for four years, people would come in with rezoning ideas, and, you know, there, a lot of times... ideas and, you know, there, a lot of times, I mean, we turned some folks down, but it just wasn't appropriate for the use in the city. But it, a lot of times, just seemed like we were being reactive to things rather than actually looking out into the future of what's going to happen to our community as it grows. And I can certainly tell you that things have changed in this community in my lifetime. And to me, when we first started talking about this, it was all about 10th Street. 10th Street is, if you drive down that street, there's a lot of, sort of in a transitional period, there's a lot of houses there that are being used as businesses now, there's houses for sale, there's vacant property, and it is an entryway into our city. And to me, I think the intention, and I think Councilman Williams can address this probably more than I can, but because he sits on there, but was to look 10, 20, 30 years out, and not for the people that own the properties today necessarily, but for what's going to happen in the future for that area. What is it that we want that area to look like? And personally, I think that, we haven't used the CN zoning very much in our community, but what I think could very possibly happen is that CN becomes the most desired zoning in our city, because it's going to, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the only zoning currently that we have architectural standards in, correct?
That's correct.
So, when you go out and you buy a piece of property and you invest your money in a building, you pretty well know that the people on either side of you are going to have to invest some money and make their property look as nice as what you've invested your money in. And so it's a way of protecting you, that's what zoning should be about. And this, again, is, when I drove down the road the other day, I'm thinking to myself, the people that own this property along 10th Street, I would guess the average age of those property owners somewhere in the 40 to 50-year-old bracket. So if those people hold on to their property for another 20 to 30 years and don't do anything with it, we're not going to see any changes regardless of whether it's CN or CL. It's the next time that something happens out there. And I was concerned that we've left out this middle section because of the percentage of non-conforming uses. But to me, the idea is, we as a city decide what we want that area of town to be like. And I certainly think, based upon what I've seen from CN, and I think Councilman Shelton is correct, that we do need to reexamine what's, what uses can go in that CN. But I think that if you set that standard out there, and there are non-conforming uses in that zone, the hope is that eventually, they will come to conformity. They will reach the level of the zoning that we've set out there, because that's what we want that community to look like. The limiting on the size of the building, I'm assuming that that limits the amount of people that can fit into that building at one given time, which means that limits the number of people that can drive into that parking lot at one time. So that helps us with traffic. And you talked about the controlling of the infrastructure and the roads. 10th Street is horrendously busy in the afternoons and in the mornings. So I guess I would like to say, I really applaud the planning commission for being forward-thinking and coming up with these ideas, and I certainly hope we can come to some compromise. I think that the section going up north Washington there, I think with good intentions, is a way of controlling that whole quadrant around that intersection, but to me is less critical, as Vice Mayor has said, less critical than the whole 10th Street. And I would hate to see that we don't do any of this because of the issues there at North Washington.
No, I'm in agreement with Mayor Slay. I think the hard, and one thing I was wanting James to bring back up, could you show us the slide of the non-conforming uses again that's there on that west side of the Washington Avenue? Now, the ones that are non-conforming there on 12th Street, those are because of size or use?
Yeah, well, the legend tells you, the North Side Shopping Center itself is size.
So it's not that his, the current uses are non-conforming, it's that the size, square footage requirement is non-conforming?
Right, it's by far, it's by far the largest structure, 49,000 square feet, 15,000 being the max. The orange is size and use, and then the yellow is use. And that's why, if you look at this, this is the area that was recommended to be left out, and that's where the concentration is. And these two areas that felt like, had, these two areas that felt like this was where it could have the most potential impact, especially this area, when this area has, and although we're talking about possibly leaving out, it has the most number of single-family houses in it now, over the whole area. But...
How does, how does the planning department feel about the possibility of eliminating that one parcel, and I'm just saying hypothetically here, eliminating that one non-conforming use parcel because of its size, and changing the rest up to 12th Street to neighborhood Did we look at that at all? I can't remember.
My original recommendation through the planning commission, and I'll talk to y'all about this at the work session on Monday, excluded this shopping center and this track. In my opinion, especially the shopping center. Although I don't think, I don't think rezoning to CN is going to affect him, on the opposite side of that, or the reverse, I don't think rezoning it to CN is going to change the property. So I don't know that it's going to accomplish, it will accomplish what we want to have happen at some point in the future. And he's going to be able to continue, but at the same token, by putting him to CN, it's not going to make a change.
But eventually...
Eventually it could.
Eventually it could, and in the meantime, rezoning to CN may not affect it in five, 10, 15 years. But here again, I'm thinking of driving from the university down 10th Street and thinking of all of the development there coming from the university, going towards 10th Street. And I think that what we have to do is have a vision for the future. And right now, we're protecting the business owners that are non-conforming. They have 30 months to fill the place. If something happens to it, they can rebuild it just as it is. And I just think about what we need to envision that whole area of town looking like, and whether it's five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And, you know, the other thing about this is, another council will come in here and might do something totally different. And for me, I would like to see CN become a predominant use in particularly downtown, not on the outskirts so much, but...
Do we have any comments from the audience? Anybody that would like to speak on this? See some folks here tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I'm the conservator for Mr. Houston Boyd.
And your name is?
Ms. Law, here.
If you could identify yourself.
Kelly Tase.
Thank you.
If you're going to exclude one thing, I would ask that his lot be excluded. That's one of the largest lots left in town. And as large as it is, you're going to limit what can go on there, which hurts the value of his property. So if you're going to start excluding things, then I would ask that his property be excluded also.
Thank you.
Explain, James, if you will, the size of building limitation. If you take a piece of property such as the one that Kelly's talking about, and the building can be 15,000 square feet, a single building, correct?
Yeah, that's, yes. What applies, it's 15,000 square feet per development, and that applies per parcel. So that track could be subdivided, and you could have several 15,000 square foot buildings.
You could have several, but you could not have one large piece like is on the opposite corner.
That's correct, you could not understand.
And when you mentioned, when you mentioned about Mr. Walker's being 49,000, is that two sep, that's two separate, there's actually two buildings there, there's, I mean, there's two?
Yes. That counts the, well, there's actually three, the little drive-through restaurant that's towards Prescott, that's actually on the same track, on the same property.
Oh, okay, so the 49,000 includes all three structures?
Yes, everything on that track.
Okay, so what is his largest structure there? The, where the grocery store and the drugstore, what is that built?
Roughly about 40,000.
Okay. So, I was just trying to get an idea of about the 15,000, so she would, so that, the property she's referring to would have to be subdivided many times?
But what is the setback? I mean, how far, what's the setback from the property? I mean, so that would limit you?
10 feet. On side property.
So you could do them 20 foot apart?
Well, you'd have 10 feet on each lot, yes.
Right, so you'd be 20 foot apart.
See, my, I mean, you know, I guess it's a debatable point about the value there, obviously, but, you know, I don't think, I think my intention would be that rezoning it to this CN would actually allow you to make more money off of that property. If you look across the street at what's going in, you know, you could have multiple units like that. And so, you know, you would subdivide it, instead of having one golden egg, you might have eight. And because of the type of development that's going there, it's going to be a nicer type of development, and so it would be worth more. I mean, you can pay $5,000 for a car, and you can pay $150,000 for a car, they both still drive around. But by setting a higher standard, I think that you'll end up getting better development over there. And so I think it would be debatable as to whether or not it would actually hurt the value, but, I mean, I certainly think you have a valid point. I mean, I can see the concern.
It's such a large, that's one of the largest pieces of property left in a...
But from a land use point, from a land use perspective, I don't think that would be an appropriate place for like a Home Depot or a, or a Walmart. I mean, it's just, you know, the traffic and the kinds of things that go along with a big box kind of a thing, it just doesn't seem like it would be appropriate, not to mention that it's surrounded by beautiful residential area. So to me, by controlling it by the 15,000 square feet, and again, you know, maybe we should look at what's available to be developed in that CN zone, you know, you, instead of having one big conglomerate, you have, you end up probably close to the same square footage, but just in different parcels.
Let me speak on value. Zoning restricts every piece of property. Every, I mean, whatever your zone, you're restricted to what's in there, and it could be argued one way or the other, if you want to use it for something that's not allowed in that zone, it's affected the value. That's really not, sorry, I don't believe, I mean, zoning can be interpreted on what is the most valuable use of this property. But that's not, I don't think, the goal or the intention of zoning, is to ensure that everybody gets the best value out of their property. You need to look at what's best for the community as a whole.
Excuse me, any other comments from the audience? Any more comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Stavney.
As I was just listening to you, I didn't hear the address that Mr. Mills made, but I'm sure he was very eloquent about what the decision was from the standpoint of the planning commission. Let me give you my personal opinion, but first of all, before I say that, any comment I'm going to make tonight is going to be simply because it was a result of the planning commission, first of all. I've said this publicly, and I've said this in the planning commission when we've met, I think the role of the planning commission is rather simple, to protect single-family housing. That's the bottom line. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that that is the mantra of what we're, that the planning commission is all about. Having said that, however, when we look to the future, as we did with the land use plan, I think it was the year 2020, we in turn gathered the information in from the council persons at that time, we gathered the information in from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think Mayor, you were on there at the same time we did this. We put our best heads together and we came up with the land use plan. We zoned that CL. We didn't use a lot of CN at that time, and that was just coming into vote. Now that we've looked at it, I think the planning commission made the right choice from the standpoint of their decision. They in turn said, this is the best, they think, for the entire area, to protect single-family housing for the outgoers, for the future. And that's what we're all about. Now, we all know that grandfathering is in place, that protects those folks that have that land right now. It's there, it's not going to change. But keep in mind, that, in my opinion, that's the sole purpose of the planning commission, to make sure that that single family, that single-family residence is being protected to the best of our ability. But at the same time, look to the future, and where we have major artillery roads, we're going to have commercial. But let's in turn make sure that when we do that, let's try to keep in mind, the city of Cookeville is a very proud place. I think the planning commission people would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Mr. Stavney, I would have to add too, that I think it's a, it's constantly a balancing act between the growth that we're having as a city, that all cities are having, and the single family, the people that live in our community and try to protect their investment in their home. So it's not an easy, not an easy thing.
Any discussion by the council?
Well, remember that some of the businesses that will, that fit into a CL zone have to be somewhere, and we can't just keep chopping those down. And so it just seems like CL is there, it's worked well, so why are we bothering it now? I mean, if we're going to go to architectural standards, which I hope we do, and work on those, well, I think that will help a lot, no matter what zone we're talking about. So I would just have to say, I'll probably have to vote against this, if we're going to have to include all of that, because I just have problems with things that are established already, and it has not, it has not hurt any, any neighborhood. And then we have a CL that's on east on 10th, so it's not hurting anything, so I'm just, I'm just having problems thinking that we'd have to change some of it, but not change all of it.
Vice Mayor, I do understand where you're coming from. Let me just make a couple of comments. You know, this is one of those non-fun times to deal with something, when you can look at both sides of something, and, you know, there really isn't no particular right or no particular wrong.
Absolutely.
It depends on where you're at in the, on the road, I guess. And the one thing I would say, from everything we've talked about, particularly about the shopping center, while I agree, it doesn't, you know, it backs up to the university, and I really wouldn't have a problem with that not being in there. But I also think it's protected under the zoning that's there, I think as long, what's there will continue, and I think we definitely will look at modifying the things that go along with this. But I think the overlying issue is, we rezoned a piece of property at 10th and Washington on the other corner right there, which actually isn't depicted on that property, I don't believe is being in this, is it?
It's right there.
Yeah.
It's already there.
That piece of property, the whole spirit of rezoning that property was to look at everything else. I mean, that was kind of what the compromise I feel was with the neighbors when we were here that night. And I think not to do this or something like this around the, certainly around the surrounding properties, and then even where else would be going, I'm talking about me personally, would be going back on what I said the night that I rezoned and voted for that. So, again, I don't think the shopping center is that big a deal because it's there, it's going to stay there, and I, you know, I appreciate the job you do in serving what you're doing. You know, that piece of property is the largest piece of undeveloped, but it does back up totally to residential, so I can, I guess, see that a little bit more. But I just think in the spirit of what we did that night on this piece of property, I feel like that this would be the continuation of what we agreed to do that night. That's my opinion.
Do I have a question?
All right, we have a call to question, I guess we need to vote on that. All those in favor of the call to question, we're going to vote on that first, it takes two-thirds, correct? All those in favor of the call to question indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Should we do roll call since it's two-thirds? Are we typically all saying?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Mayor Slay?
No.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Question passes.
Question passes, now we vote on the motion as presented. Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Shel- Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Mayor Sully?
No.
Vice Mayor Davis?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. It brings us to item, let's see, item eight now?
We're to nine now.
Item nine. Um, hold a public hearing and consider a first reading ordinance 071135, rezoning properties located at East Tenth Street and Fisk Road from CL local commercial and RS10 single-family to CN neighborhood commercial, sponsor James Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, this property is located at the eastern end of the study area that we just reviewed, or at least a portion of it is. The rezoning was initiated by both the planning commission and at the request of property owners. This is aerial view of the property in its entirety. This is area two of the study area, and there were seven parcels located at the intersection of Fisk Road and north of Tenth Street and west of Fisk, that were identified in the study we just discussed, as being appropriate for rezoning from CL to CN. No existing uses within this area would be non-conforming if rezoned to CN. One development is approximately 100 square feet over the maximum square footage allowed under CN, that's the new shopping center behind the CVS Pharmacy. The owners of the property where the CVS Pharmacy is located, which are these four parcels right here, indicated at the planning, or indicated by correspondence that they were opposed to the rezoning to CN, because they were trying to locate a drive-through restaurant on their one existing vacant tract. The proposed rezoning of the properties south of East Tenth Street and west of Fisk Road was initiated by Mr. Jerry Jared on behalf of the property owners. The request submitted by Mr. Jared was to rezone these properties from RS10 to CL. And there are eight properties in there, and this property is bounded by Tenth Street to the north, Fisk and Shanks to the east and west, and Syracuse Street to the south. And you can see, it's also bounded by RM14 zoning to the east, RS10 zoning to the south, CL to the north and west, and also RM14 to the north. There's a large multifamily apartment complex that's located on this property and on this property. The fourth side, of course, the south side, is solidly established single-family area. Each of these eight lots currently has a house located on them, occupied house. The request that the planning commission review did not include a, any specific information on how these properties would be used. Planning commission felt though, that due to the scale and range of uses that was allowed in CL, that these properties were not suitable for that zoning. However, since the area was contiguous with the area along East Tenth Street identified for rezoning to CL to CN, it was recommended by the planning commission that these eight parcels also be rezoned to CN. And that's what's before you tonight, and the planning department concurs with the planning commission's recommendation.
Do we have a motion in a second?
To approve.
No for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion by the council?
Okay. Can you go back, do you have a plot of, of the, the one you showed before about the non-conforming uses?
Not, I can go back to that one.
Does it cover this?
Yes, it does. I'm sorry, I should have put one in there. The only non-conforming use that's in this, and this, the boundary on this is right through here, is this set of buildings right here, which exceed by 100, it's 15,100 feet in size.
Okay. Why is the, the part to the left of that, the large piece that's not developed, why, that backs up to residential, why is that not included in this?
That's a very good question. There was a lot of debate about that at the planning commission, several of the planning commission members felt like it should be, it should have been included in it. But, and I don't really know the exact reason, that's what was agreed upon by the planning commission and sent, and sent to you. There are also, again, the boundary structure stops right here, I think a lot of it was to try to come up with an appropriate boundary. This, if you're familiar with the area, is the, are the condominiums, or the apartments that were converted to condominiums by J.D. Parks here recently, they would become non-conforming. This track here is, is, was recently rezoned, the back part of it, from CL for the purpose of constructing condominiums, that was just recently done. And they, part of the reason that didn't go out here was to make a logical boundary to come across from here, would have to put that track in that, and that would prohibit those condominiums from being built, which are not allowed in the CN, after we just here in the last few months rezoned it for condominiums to go in there. So that's part of the reason why. But there was, there was, council, a lot of, a lot of desire by some of the planning commission members to include those additional tracks. And it might, I mean, it's a large undeveloped track, and that's one where the CN could have impact.
I think a little bit of the reason too, that was made, was because of it being an L-shaped lot, to take that parcel and make half of it CN, half of it CL, because of the, because it wraps around, I guess, which was O'Reilly Auto Parts and skate, skating rink there. I think that was one of the reasons it was commented at the time.
Can we go back to the zoning? That, those are, these are the tracks you're asking about. There are, it is immediately contiguous with this.
Is that one, that one separate one, is that?
These are both.
That?
Were owned by the same family, they're two parcels. This, this is where the condominium development's located. And that's the track I was referring to, that's been, had just been, this section had just been rezoned to CL with the purpose of going for condominiums.
Condominiums are not allowed in CN, correct?
And why, why is that, James?
Generally condominiums, really, except for ownership, and of course, they can be more upscale, but basically in terms of density, it's the same as apartments. And that's why I was concerned, it didn't feel like it was a mix for...
Was, is town ho, is it, would be a town home, would be, that be acceptable in a CN zone?
Also allowed in the CN right now are single-family and duplex residential with 5,000 square feet per lot. So if you can develop townhouses on 5,000 square feet per lot, which is unlikely, that, you could do that.
Well, probably was left in CL because there's so much commercial around, you know, the O'Reilly and all that, so they just felt like that was just a cutoff place.
There was a lot of this same discussion with the planning commission, and, and, you know, and we talked about this earlier, but there was several on the planning commission that felt the whole area should go to CN. There was some that felt like, we shouldn't have any, so, I mean, this is what, best we could, most we could come up with.
This was the best compromise we could come up with at the time, very difficult.
Ricky, I, I, I don't have any perfect, you know, exact answer for you, it was just a lot of, a lot of debate.
Do we have any comments from the audience? I'd like to speak on this.
I, I did, I did, from here. After the decision was made, and after we did this, I did receive some phone calls from some of the planning committee members, asking whether or not this property, question that you're asking, that could be included. My opinion was, that can't be done at once, because it has to be a public hearing and have looked at the whole process.
That's correct.
At the time, I said to myself, no, we can't do that. That has to be brought forth, so we have a public hearing, can and inform us. So, I, I didn't say yea or didn't say no at the time, but that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Jerry.
While he gets up here, let me add some more clarification to that. This whole area was studied by the planning commission and submitted to you. I believe if you think it needs to be altered, that you can do that without it going back to the planning commission. Now, the planning commission, Chairman Staff is right, before they would have to consider something like that, since it's already been to them, it would have to be resubmitted. But even on, you know, if you can make alterations, as long as it's in the area that, that's been studied and submitted to by the planning commission.
I'm Jerry Jared, and I'm here representing Ms. Margaret McCormick, who's sitting right here. She, she lacks that 40 to 50-year-old range, so she'll, she'll take that. Really, the one, the main reason I wanted up here, wanted to say something to you, it really goes back to, to the L-shaped property you talked about there, and I, I think Ms. Davis, or someone mentioned, they remembered the reason that that wasn't included. And I, I remember, I'm one of the trustees of this, the Cleveland Williams property, if you're familiar with the, I know you are, and I'm one of the co-trustees of that property. Now, I think it is correct that, partly, at least some of the reason of the planning commission was that this property is surrounded by longtime commercial businesses there. It's all, it's all around it. In fact, we sold part of the property off to a bank, and, and I think Mr. Oakley maybe donated the other part to TIC, and maybe the drugstore was put in there. So I think that, as I remember, that, that was one of the reasons for that, and, and so maybe it does need to be studied further, I don't know. I really don't have a great objection one way or the other, because Mr. Sully had a good point about, sometimes lemonade can be made out of lemons, in time about Mr. Bullage property there, so. But at any rate, insofar as Ms. McCormick and her neighbors, there are eight lots there, and seven of the property owners have indicated by their signature, they would like it rezoned. They wanted CL, but they'll agree for, for the neighborhood also, there was no problem with that. The only one that didn't sign was, y'all remember Patrolman Bill Malone, he has two sons, and they own the other corner lot that's next to the Putnam House, West Putnam House there. And they're not opposed to this, they, they just didn't sign right now. It, I was out there tonight, and as you all know, that's originally a part of Highway 42, and it's a major artery, it's akin to Willow and South Jefferson, and this tremendous amount of commerce and traffic goes through that road. And I know that, that maybe we all would like for it to be like Buffalo Valley yesterday, but I think not. There's not enough traffic down there, we'd like a little more. But at any rate, in this particular property, it's surrounded. You remember years ago, maybe five or 10 years ago, we had kind of a tacit agreement in town here to limit growth on Tenth Street to anything west where Fisk Road crosses, remember that? And, but anyway, that's, that, Cookville has grown. And so now we've gone, we've gone east of Fisk Road, we have a, we have a bank immediately across from Ms. McCormick there, we have a bank to the left of Ms. McCormick, she's just got money all around, around with it. And we have a drugstore, and then on the other part is, is these apartments buildings. And so we think that it's reasonable, and we think it'll benefit the city, and that this, this artery goes from, from all good to Cookville, and Cookville to all good, and it's, it's pretty commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. I had a, and I, I would have to agree that as we're growing, you know, there is a lot of commerce on Tenth Street there. I was wondering, when we talked about that shopping center earlier, being 40 years old, of course, I wasn't around when that shopping center was built, but what, what that was like out there, was that, you know, was that, that was kind of out of town, I would imagine, going out that way.
Being thought about.
Let's keep it to the issue.
Is there any other discussion by the council, or?
I just want to clarify a statement he, he made, because of a statement that Mr. Staffney made, and Councilman Shelton. You, sir, are the trustee of that L-shaped piece of property?
Yes, I'm a co-trustee.
Are you, are you saying that you, you did or did not have a preference as to the zoning of that?
Well, right now, I think my co-trustee and I, who's in the middle of the study, would prefer it remain like the other property there, it's the L.
Okay.
But I don't think we would nash and put our hair and change it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I, I understood that statement, because if, if, as was stated earlier, if you're okay with CN, and I know that was a piece of property that Councilman Shelton just drew question to, and I know it's one that Mr. Staffney had talked about, that might pave the way to change that to CN, if we wanted to amend that. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Um, council, you know that they're probably right to add this on there, we probably would need to re-advertise on this. It wouldn't have to go back to planning commission, since they have studied it, but our notice didn't include that property.
Yeah, okay.
What I told Mr. Mills is you can proceed forward tonight with the proposal, but if you wanted to add additional properties, you'd have to go back through the process.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to me, this is like a, kind of like a live and breathing document kind of thing. I mean, you know, we've got, we've got a part here in the middle, which, you know, you think should be, and, and so at some point, I'm sure more of this will get studied, and it may meet somewhere in the middle even further, whether it's this council, or another council, or another council may change, or what we've done. So, you know, I, I think we're, we've probably done a pretty decent job of, of one thing tonight, and then certainly the planning commission, if they want to look at this further, could, could start it and look at that at some point.
I agree.
So there's no amendment to then, we're to leave it like this?
Any further discussion?
I guess you want to make one.
No.
Any comments, further comments from the audience? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes.
Mayor Sully?
Aye.
Councilman, I mean Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Brings us to item 10. Hold a public hearing and consider a first reading ordinance 071131, amending the Cookville zoning code pertaining to section 207, general sign regulations. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and councilmembers, these amendments have been prepared by the planning department, and they are done primarily, and they are necessarily, necessary primarily to comply with a portion of a settlement agreement between the city and east-west media. The first proposed amendment is not necessarily part of that, the agreement, but it is, it would add a specification or notice that the provisions of the Tennessee Code pertaining to licensed contractors would apply for the erection of all signs, including on-premise and off-premise. State law requires that all construction projects valued at more than $25,000 be completed by a licensed general contractor, and it was our council's concern and other concerns that some of our signs may have been installed that weren't by licensed contractors. So this is a clarification and insertion in there. The remaining amendments are done specifically as part of the settlement agreement, and the intention is to allow signs along I-40 and 111 to comply with T-dot locate, T-dot requirements for size, height, and panel configuration. And those amendments are included in the ordinance. I'd be glad to go on those in detail if you'd like, but that is the intention of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council? Do we have any comments from the audience? Further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item 11, consider approval of TTU sinkhole study contract agreement. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and councilmembers, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and we budgeted this year half the cost for the completion of this study, TIC has submitted agreement to us. Again, the purpose of the study is to, is for, is to identify the sinkholes within Cookville and our urban growth boundary that have flooding problems. A primary end product of this study would be a sinkhole floodplain map. That's something we've needed for many, many years, and I'm thankful for you putting in the budget this year, but we do have the contract, this is payable in over two years. The total project would be 85,000. We have funded in this year's budget half the cost at 42,500. The agreement's been reviewed by the financial director and the city manager, and the planning department requests your approval.
Do we have a motion in a second?
No approval.
We have an emotion?
Second.
Second, any discussion by the council?
I'm so glad we're finally getting to this. We've been...
Just a clarification of your statement, though, you said that all the areas where we're having problems with drainage, but it's actually all the sinkhole systems.
It's, it's all sinkholes.
Okay, okay.
It's for entire urban growth boundaries of our study.
Very good.
The ones we know about, the ones we don't know about.
Well, there'll be minor sinkholes that they won't identify, that don't have, these are the ones that we need to protect.
And from this study, we hope to, there, allow our public works department to do, do their jobs as relates to maintaining these areas, correct?
No, I wouldn't go that far. Most of these will be on private property, and it'll be under our...
I don't mean maintaining, but, but, I guess, policing, I guess, what was the development around?
Well, we'll have, by identifying, and we have regulations in place in our zoning code, we just don't have all the sinkholes identified. We had a study done 20 years ago that covers maybe a little more than half of our current corporate limits, and none of our urban growth boundaries, so this will help us ensure that these areas are protected. these areas are protected.
Well, and how, how we can expand our growth and development, I mean, know where, you can build something where you can't?
And this will also help protect property owners, that they know where these sinkholes are, and how much of that area is anticipated to flood in a, in a certain rainfall event, that they won't build in those areas and have their property or their structures damaged. So there's, it's very important.
Do we have any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, you can have a seat now.
Earned your money.
Item 12, consider awarding the following bids. Item 12A is two, four-by-two pickup trucks, the Public Works Department, sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we advertised and received bids for two, a full-size, two-wheel-drive pickups. We had two bids that were very close, and I would like to recommend the local bidder meeting specs, Heritage Ford, price was 13,535 each, for a total of $27,070.
Do we have a motion in a second?
So move.
Have our motion second, all those in favor, do we have any discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All righty, item 12B, emergency vehicle equipment, Police Department, sponsor Captain Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, we advertise and receive bids for vehicle emergency equipment. There's actually, I think, six are showing up there, there's seven items we're seeking approval on, a variety of items. That particular, the large item there is a, is a, actually a package item, which includes LED light bar, siren box, control box, et cetera. We would recommend on that one that you award that bid to Truckers Lighthouse, they are the only bidder meeting bid specifications. And on the remainder of those six items, recommend awarding the bid to Craig's Farms as the low bidder.
Do we have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Captain.
Captain Evans, I have one question. Are the motorcycles out and about yet?
They are equipped, I think we're waiting on some officers to get certi, they did use those during the parade, but I think they're sending those officers to get certified before they actually put them out there on the street full-time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. They are equipped and ready to go.
Item 12C, raw water intake improvements, Water Quality Control Department, sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised and opened bids on the raw water intake structure. We received five bids, WNO Construction, low bidder, and would recommend approval, that was 3.336 million dollars.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Move approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
What was the budget amount for this? Is this a budget amount, or no?
We had budgeted 2 million in this physical year, knowing that the project was going to go through next year.
So we spent 1.3 next year we know in the water department?
Oh, yeah. We're going to spend more than that.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we were estimating it around the $4 million range.
It was a good bid. Yeah, yeah, we're very, very happy with the bids.
All right.
Felt like we got real good bids.
Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. That brings us to the hearing of citizens and/or delegations, portion of our council meeting, and we also open up the door to the council for anybody that would like to share any ideas, and we invite the public to come. We had a few extra seats tonight, and would like for you to come and share your ideas with us. And seeing none, I will declare the meeting adjourned.
Here, thank you.